I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, October 28th at 2021. The time is 1:10. This meeting will also be accessible through Zoom that we put on our website. I'd like to call to order. This is also in the council chambers. Councilmember Eversole.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Councilmember Heims.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Mrs. Mayor Keon. From staff, we have interim city administrator Tony Vasecki.
Here.
And we have interim city clerk Josh Stecker.
I'm here.
And momentarily, we will have our finance director. The discussion items is our 2022 budget. Being that I will want to partake in this discussion as well, it's better to have our city administrator facilitate the meeting. With that, I will, I will mention Dave Rodebock when he comes back in, but otherwise I will turn it over to Tony.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I had sent an email to each of you, not each of you, to the whole council describing how I intend to proceed today. I'll just give you a quick reminder of that. Going to go through the budget document, but we're not going to look at every single page because we don't have that much time. And there's a lot of stuff in here that I know council either is fine with, or there is really no need to discuss it because it's just a description of a department or a function. We don't need to get into all that. The real meat of what we want to talk about are in the pages called the narrative objectives. That is the page where the departments are proposing how they want to spend certain amounts of money versus, you know, we have all these positions and we're going to be spending X number of dollars on salaries and the like. Unless there's positions council suddenly tells me we need to remove from the budget, there's no point in talking about that because that's pretty much a given. So I'd like to concentrate on those things. As we go through each department, I will also call out the items that the mayor and I had removed from the budget that had been requested by departments. So we can talk about those in context of the departments rather than dealing with those at the very end.
And I'd like to acknowledge I had our finance director do a little quick errand for us. So our finance director is here, Dave Rodebock. Here. Thank you.
And as we go along, what I'm asking for as we go through these items is councils consensus as to whether or not they want these items in the budget, removed from the budget. And before we leave each department or function, I'll ask, is there anything else that council wants to discuss that hasn't been put in front of you? And if not, I'll try to keep things moving along very quickly because again, we still, we have a lot of material to cover here. So with that, as I look through the budget, the first place where there, I think, I think there are decisions for council to make is on page 34, the non-departmental object narrative of objectives. This is where we're putting money in for things like the Harbor History Museum, museums, maritime and native galleries and the like. So if you would turn to that page, we can discuss that one. Oh, you're just getting ready to talk. Okay. On that page, I do want to point out that item six, Gig Harbor Peninsula Fish Food Bank, that $200,000 will be removed based on the council direction that we received in the budget amendment we put before you to put $500,000 toward or to the fish food bank this year rather than waiting for next year. Other than that, council, do you have any comments or changes or modifications to this page?
So thank you. I see on here that there's employee benefits here.
Yes.
And I'm not sure where this particularly goes, but in 2021, we had an employee survey for $5,000 in the budget, and I'd like to see it put back in for 2022. It may not, it may be that we, we're not ready for a survey in 2022, but I think it should be in there.
I believe it's in there.
And do you know what page it's on?
No, but it should be in here. We did put that in here.
I didn't see it, so I missed it. If somebody could guide me to that.
Potentially HR, that's where I'm going to look. I'm not sure though.
Let's answer that question now because I know we did put it in there. I believe it might be on page 51. Let's see.
Mayor, I've done a digital search for the survey and it's not coming up in my search of the document.
Yeah, I don't see it anywhere in HR either.
Agreed. It's not in there.
Okay, we will, I'm supportive of that and we did have it in there. So I'm not sure. I still have a feeling it's in here somewhere. Maybe it's, so we'll, we'll we'll try to find that out before the end of this meeting.
Yeah, otherwise we will put it into the appropriate spot. It probably belongs under HR since it's an HR sort of function.
How much was that for?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. Thank you.
I think we had it actually more than that. So.
I think the figure's always been five thousand.
Or employee survey?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. Is this for the?
Boy opinion survey?
Oh, this is not for the company. This is not for the company to, are you asking for the company that we had a company to do a deeper dive in the 20?
No, this has to be a follow-up survey on the original.
Oh, yeah. No, it's, it's not in there. It's.
So it was in the 2021 budget. I'd like to see it in the 2022 budget.
Okay, let's discuss that because it's, it's interesting that I heard at a, and I'm glad this is being recorded. It's interesting that council was, some council, a lot of, well, council was supportive, some council members were supportive of doing the survey, and then they were supportive of a company digging into the results of the survey. And then when they found out that I wasn't rerunning, they actually implied that they don't even need to to have the results involved with a consultant, which I had mentioned is just shows that it really wasn't about the employees. It was about trying to just go after the mayor. So it, so they dropped, so the council dropped it. There is money in here to have a consultant you'll respond to that survey. So I don't think it's wise to have a new survey when you haven't even done anything with the results of the old survey. I also think, excuse me, I also think that you don't do a survey every year because you don't even have time to implement any changes to make the improvements that you're seeking to do if you don't even implement any changes first. So council.
I can't recall that council wanted some company to do a deep dive. That's.
They actually did a presentation.
Please give me the floor. I don't remember that we had any conversation about, or at least we didn't approve anything about paying some company to do a deep dive. We had a plan to look at that ourselves, set up committee. Incidentally, nothing's been done. So I think if we had five, eliminate that money, if it's in there for a company to do a deep dive, have another employee survey towards the end of 2022 to see if whatever efforts we made the first quarter, the second quarter came to any fruition, if things were improved. So I think it's good that we have a base and then, you know, a year from now, towards the end of 2022, we do another time. So I would put 5,000 in there for a new survey, and if money is in there for some company to do a deep dive, I think it should come out. I also think as a point of order in council meetings, we all talk until somebody, somebody that hasn't talked yet can talk. It isn't like you talked, mayor talks, he talks, the mayor talks. I think we should do our regular demeanor or regular council rules.
I haven't talked twice.
Not yet.
Right. And you interrupted staff at the last council study session and cut them off. I would like to correct you though, that we actually had a resolution and a company came to a council meeting with a consultant to approve it that night. So we actually did have a consultant. We went through many firms and a consultant actually came and gave a presentation and council was actually going to vote afterwards on approving that. So we haven't done anything with any, we haven't implemented any changes whatsoever.
I think everyone knows that. I think that's why we need to eliminate that. If any other council people can remember how we did that, I'd appreciate your input.
So there was a company that presented and the council voted that we did not need that survey at this time. And so, so my, my, my objective in putting this 5,000 in is that it would be either towards the end of the year or placeholder going forward for 2023. But let's put it in there for 2022 and not forget about it. Because we do need to have a follow-up survey, but we have had a base and now whatever needs to be done, we need to have a follow-up survey.
So there's, there was no money in the 2020, 2021 budget that was appropriated at the end of 2020. You may have talked about doing something like that and spending some money sometime in the first or second quarter of this year. Nothing was done. I would suggest if I'm seeing consensus from the council that we put $5,000 in with a note that this is for a survey to be conducted in the second half of next year.
That's fine.
That consensus of council?
Yes.
Yes.
And I hope the voters are listening to this.
Right now I'm hearing three saying yes, and I'm not getting head nut, I heard four. So it is a consensus of the council. So shall we move on on other items that are on this page?
On that list, we have $10,000 for the senior services fund. And since we saved or we, we used the five, the $200,000 that was going to go to Fish initially in the proposed budget, we are putting that money back into the general fund, I'm assuming, and $500,000 of the ARPA money, I would like to see us put another $100,000 into the senior services fund just so that hopefully over the next several years, who knows what's going to happen with the Masonic Temple, some other location that will have a head start to help with the seniors who I believe are a very underrepresented part of our community. So since we were using $200,000 to a community program in the preliminary budget, which was Fish, I see a senior center as a community service. So I would like to see us put $100,000 into that fund rather than just the 10.
I'm supportive of that. And then councilmember Franch, you mean to go to the capital fund for the future building, right? I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, well, this fund was established to provide funding for senior facilities and activities. So I would see it more towards long-term goal for them, but and do we have, have any idea how much we reimburse them? Did they spend the whole five, 10,000 that we gave them last year?
I don't believe they did.
They are.
I don't believe they did this year so far.
They're turning seats right now, so they probably will be pretty close to it. And we put in 10,000 for next. And we do have, even though it's in our general fund, there, you know, Dave has put a separate category for that 100,000. So it just doesn't go to other things. I will, I guess warn council that as you add money to that, you will create more pressure as to doing something for them, which is a hard thing to figure out. So just so you are aware.
I understand. And I'm hoping that, you know, I know that the senior group, you know, they're, they're working hard and they're located in a church now, but if a year, next year, or the year after that, some other matching grant opportunity comes for a building that they can use or acquire, that they would have a head start towards, with city participation towards trying to make something happen for them.
I'm supportive of that as well. Can that qualify for ARP funding?
I believe it does qualify for ARP funding, but I'll look to the finance director.
It sounds like it could.
So maybe we could take it out of ARP.
But we don't have anywhere to spend it right now, and we may not for several.
And that's what I was going to say. I, I like the idea of added money for senior services. But let's get together with the senior center staff and find out what do they need, what are their thoughts? We know we have this placeholder in the budget of 100, actually now 110,000 if that's council's desire, and we can sit down with them and talk about what would be a good productive ways to use that funding.
Doesn't the ARP money need to be spent by 2024?
I believe it does.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
But that, where it comes from, it's fine.
So we can use ARP if with the purpose that we're going to be doing can allow it to all be spent by the end of 2024. If not, then it's general fund money.
But the 10,000 is in a separate category so that it's in a separate fund to be each year.
Right.
Yeah.
My question, I guess, is, does that money come out of the general fund, Jim?
Yeah, that's of the 200,000 that was, I'm assuming allocated out of the general fund to go to Fish initially. And we switched it to come out of ARP. I'm assuming that that.
I'm certainly in favor of doing that. Maybe I need clarification that you're talking about one or two years down the road. Is it possible? Does it fit in your plan? Or your idea to put in less money this year with the intent, we do the same next year? And maybe save part of that 100,000 you're suggesting for other programs or other things we may end up doing in this budget? Is that unreasonable or?
Well, I mean, I, I would like to see, I would like to see 200,000 personally. So I mean, I thought 100,000 since that was just a number that I thought was fair. And I think we have the money to do it.
Put that in there for now. And then if it, as we go along, if we think we need money elsewhere, we, you know, this is, we're not passing.
Yeah, I was in favor of it. I just wanted clarification.
Well, I'm, I'm seeing consensus of council to move 100,000 into senior services somewhere in the budget in addition to the 10,000.
So clarity, the 100,000 would be, when you say two, you mean the 100 that's already existing and we're adding 100 to it, correct?
That's what I meant. I was, I was just answering council, when councilmember Rothenberg asked me my question, I'm like.
Right. I would suggest if you do that, not tying it to ARP because you're putting a very, a very constricted deadline of getting, you'll, you'll have to spin that by 2024 and
I would like to see it come out of the general.
I would support that.
Yes, it would be better to have it come out of the general fund just because until their, their project is contingent on finding land or finding a building, either or, and we don't know how long it's going to take to find that land or find, they, they know, they know what building they want to build. They've got schematics and everything for it. They're like ready to build. They just need to find land to build it on. So that would be a great placeholder, that would be a great placeholder to have in the general fund for them. So find something and they're able to go out for grants and we could match something and it's already there. That would just streamline their process and really help them out.
And if it turns out that they do that quickly, then we could amend the budget maybe to use Harper and, and put this back in.
Yeah, exactly.
At that time, but placeholder now.
For now, it's 100,000.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else on that page?
I just have a, okay, I just want to clarify, the 100,000 is going into the, the senior center fund. So we're gradually building that. So now there'll be 200,000 in the capital senior center fund, but there's still 10,000 for senior programming.
Correct.
Okay. And then could I just, I would like to suggest that we add the words, if I could read my handwriting, and membership scholarships. So in addition to support learning and enrichment activities, I'd like to add and membership scholarships in case they've got low-income seniors that want to join the senior center. They don't have to use it, but they've got that capability.
Should we ask them if they need that? Because I don't think it costs.
But, you know, they can have it in there because it's like $50. And if that helps get more seniors involved.
Anything else before we move on?
What page was that on, Tony?
That was on page 34, at least on, on my.
A question for Dave. Since the, the piggy bank has a limit, you know, we can't just, we've already added 105,000 and we just started. So as we keep adding more hundreds of thousands, we're going to, we're going to draw down our reserve. It's not, it's not endless money. So are you going to show us at one point where we're going to have to start borrowing from somewhere else or this, where, where we're at if we just keep doing this?
I'm going to keep a rough tally, plus and minus off of where we started from. And I'll let you know where we are at the end roughly. Okay.
Am I, in the very beginning of the budget, when we, under the general fund, it looked like the, or the ending fund balance was up about 900,000. Is that still? Am I right on that? And I'm not sure what page. It's in the very, very beginning when we have the ending fund.
What, what you see is, is pretty correct, but it's going to obviously change because we're reducing the estimated ending by 500,000 due to, due to the fish. Well, a net of three, because then we're putting two back in that we're going to do next year. I'll, I'll tell you what that is in a minute. I have it, a pro forma right here.
So the, and I'm looking at page 32, the ending fund balance. Wrong page. I was assuming that we, yeah, we had a $963,000 change in our ending fund balance and that reflects the $1.4 million of ARPA money.
What page are you on?
Well, I'm looking at page 30.
Let's see here. It could be looked at that way because we took in 1.5 almost in ARP.
Yeah, so that, that money shows in that.
Yes, it does.
Okay. So we're actually $300,000 less on that because of the change in the fish.
Correct.
Thank you.
Now $400,000 less because we just moved another 100,000 out of fund balance. All right.
So I'd like to talk about item number five on page 34. This is for collaborative funding for the Harbor History Museum. And they've asked for 150,000 for three years for this project. They've gotten matching funds and they can go for a grant if we give them this. The 150,000 does not have to be all cash. It can also come out in permitting fees and things like that. So I guess we've all had information from the Harbor History Museum on what this project is for and why it's important. So I would like to see $150,000. I think we have to make a hun, I think we, I think in order for them to get the grant, they need to have a commitment for 150,000 for three years.
And when you say it's actually 150 per year?
That's correct.
It's good to state it that way. It's 150 for three. It's 150,000 per.
150,000 for three year, for, per, per year for three years.
Thank you.
I would second that.
Is there general support on council for that?
I, I can't support that, that kind of ongoing commitment. I think it's an, an important endeavor at the museum, but I think the city has been doing its fair share over the last many years of supporting the museum. And, you know, I believe they bit off a little bit more than they could chew with their proposal to do the Shenandoah. So I just don't think it's an appropriate use of that, that amount of money, 450,000 over three years. That's a, that's a big chunk of change.
I would agree with my fellow council member, but I also think that what the opportunity that it's going to offer the public to be able to come down to basically the beach, get on the Shenandoah and be able to look out over that waterfront from a big, beautiful viewing area, especially on a day like today, which is quite common here in the Pacific Northwest. It would really give the community an opportunity to really enjoy the beautiful nature of that lower area, waterfront area. It will bring tourism. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, but people can still, with or without their project, the, the Shenandoah project that they've undertaken, people still have the opportunity to enjoy the things you just mentioned.
So what is the rest of the council think about this?
Is there, is this also to include construction of the gallery and closing the Shenandoah?
I believe that's what it's for.
Yeah, that's what my understanding is.
What that would do is add $57,000 to this line item to bring it up to 150.
This year.
This year. And then with the understanding that if you're going in with a commitment for next year, you're going to have to do a commitment for the next three years of that amount. Why, do I see council?
I, I declared he, you're actually adding 90,000 to this because, so there's 30,000 in number four that we put in the budget for free emission, which doesn't cover it at all. There's $33,000 in item five to fix their driveway. And so I had put in the budget 60,000 towards the 150 because I thought there, you know.
Well, with the, with the proposal being that it could be $150,000 worth of cash or a combination of cash and in kind, I was just assuming that the 33,000 to fix the driveway was part of the total 150.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Said that way, I, I agree.
That's what I was assuming as well.
I'm seeing consensus on council to do that as well. So that'll be an additional 47,000 on that line item. I'm sorry, 57,000. Are you ready to turn the page? The next item would be to talk about the court and their narrative of objectives, and that's on page 42. I will note that item number four judicial salary has been removed because we are negotiating with the judge right now. We actually have an ordinance to set that salary. So that's not an item for this year. But a new number four would be court security, which we are still looking into and we'll add some wording to that. But I think what we told council is our proposal is to take the new community service officer from the police department that is being proposed to go from point four to point six to handle the evidence room. And if that person has a limited commission where they could do the court security, we would do it that way. Otherwise, we would go to private security. Any other comments on this page? So next we would get, jump into administration. And that starts at least as far as the narrative objectives on page 50. 50, 5-0. So under administration, we have a, a few dollar amounts, downtown waterfront alliance, chamber of commerce, our state and federal lobbying efforts. Any thoughts or comments on those items?
The lobbying amount, was that on the other page too? That 40,000?
I don't recall. It belongs here, not on.
Under legislative or is that, oh, that's county auditor. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Have we already signed an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell for next year?
We have not.
Okay.
I am waiting for proposals from them and they are slated to be approved by council at the December 13th meeting.
Do you expect them to come in any higher than the 40,000 or is that a reasonable?
No, I expect them to be right there. And if, and if they come a little higher, I'll ask them to lower it. I think that's reasonable amount for both of these contracts.
What page are you on now?
I'm on page 50.
We actually got them to lower it a year ago and we've added in grants in number four. It says that they will actually do grant writing for us, which they were not doing before. So that's a big deal. And that will be in the contract as well.
All right, seeing no other items. Under human resources, it is not listed as a narrative of objectives, but we had talked to council about adding two positions, which are just a few pages further. Since we're on HR, I'd like to talk about those now. We had requested a HR analyst and an HR assistant. HR Director Borders provided a presentation. She provided additional information about what her department does, what these staff people would do. So I'd like to get direction from council as to what you'd like to put in the budget.
I, I just need to go back to page.
Page 50, which one? Okay. Yes.
I see that last sentence, HR work with a select consultant to develop a program.
Honestly, no, there's no reason why we can't do that. Our own survey other cities as to what they're doing. With, with the limited amount of time. I believe there is some limited professional services money in the budget already for HR, and it would just come out of that. And quite frankly, with the additional positions that we are requesting, if both are put in, I think we could not hire a consultant to do this work and just give that to one of the new individuals.
That's a great idea for the our consultant to figure it out.
The council member Wu has her hand up.
I'm in favor of one of these positions, but not both.
I'm in supportive of the one position, the HR analyst. That's the more skilled person. And I think that in the summary here of what their responsibilities would be is to hire staff. And I think that's where we're failing or not doing as good a job as we possibly can. And then the other position, I think I spoke with the other night, I, I think there's, in my opinion, I think there's a lack of efficiency in that department. And I think throwing more people at it doesn't necessarily make, make it happen. I think that we should do a employee staffing survey of that particular department. We have employee survey, which I've got seventy-three pages of comments here. HR and the inefficiency and the way they do their business is on every single page at least three times. So I think there's something not particularly right with that department. And I think a staffing survey, I think they cost around forty thousand dollars is something that we should do. I think that particular department has more comments about it, more controversy, more people talking, this and that, good and bad. And I think having an outside firm selected by the city administrator, not selected by the HR director to look at, that is the best way to go. And if we did that quickly in two thousand twenty-two, then we could amend the budget if, in fact, that staffing survey says someone is needed. So I'm, I'm proposing a forty thousand dollar staffing survey in HR and just the one HR analyst. And that's my thoughts on HR.
And before I ask council for comments on that, I will simply say that I think part of the issue and big part of the issue with the quote inefficiencies with HR is the lack of staff and the number of hours available to do the work. For the last year and a half, the HR director has been doing way more of the detail work than she should be. And I think with the additional staff, the department would be better, but I'd like to hear council's input on what Councilmember Rodenberg is suggesting.
I, I'm supportive of the one analyst position and the HR consultant, but in addition to efficiency, I think we need to look at the job functions within that department, because I think they are doing too much. So what, and we could have somebody that works with other municipalities look at, okay, how other HR departments do it, what function goes where, either within that department with different staff, or maybe there's some things being done by the HR department that is better done by a different department. Maybe there's some duplication and redundancy. So I don't know if Councilmember Rodenberg supports that as part of his.
That's staffing survey essentially.
Okay.
I think you're all saying the same thing. A performance audit, a department review. It's looking at how it functions, what it does and how it could function better.
We can't forget that for the, for the most part in the last year or so, there were two more people in that department and still didn't get done.
And they weren't there the entire year, but yes. Other, other comments from council?
Well, I do think we need to strengthen our HR department. But I think I, I would rather see the new mayor have an opportunity to get in and, you know, make whatever changes that she's going to make before we spend forty thousand dollars on a consultant. Maybe in a couple of years, if the mayor wants to proceed that way in the future, we go that way, but I think we're going to be in a transition time right now. And so putting the money towards a consultant may or may not be a good waste of money, or spending money, especially the new mayor that comes in and makes any changes to staff or things like that. So I would give it time and patience. My opinion.
Well, would you support one position or two?
I would support both positions. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would like to find out if how efficient the department is run. I think that leaving both positions in the budget and filling the, the analyst or posting the analyst position, filling that and maybe waiting, because I really agree with Councilmember Abersold. I think that the new administration should have a chance to assess it on their own. And I don't know if I'm necessarily on board with spending forty thousand dollars for a consultant to do it, but I, I probably wouldn't be opposed to having that as a placeholder, but, but I think the new mayor and the new administration should have some leeway in doing their own assessment of how that department is operating. But I, I thought that Camille's letter that she sent with, and as Councilmember Denson alluded to, that they are doing a lot more than some HR departments and other jurisdictions are doing. So I think there needs to be some a little bit more thoughtful process that goes into exactly what's going on up there. And I think it's important to let the new mayor and the new administration look into it. But I think leaving the, leaving both the positions in the budget would be fine with me, but I'm not so sure about filling them both right away.
I, I think that respectfully to Councilman Abersold, I think that waiting a year or two, it's just going to postpone it. And with all respect to the new probable mayor, I don't believe she has the expertise to ascertain exactly the efficiency of a department of which she's never had any experience. So I think that we really need a professional company to do that staffing survey, and I know where we can get the money. And, and I, but I do agree with Councilman Frannich, put both of those positions in the budget, but just post the HR analyst. Where we get the money is we've got forty thousand dollars in there to do the police department staffing survey, of which I don't believe we need any longer because we are essentially.
Can we not jump to another subject?
Well, just, okay, well, that's where the money could come from.
Can we hear from the four that have not, or the, we've heard two and two. Can we hear from the others?
Let's remember Heim's in Markley.
Well, I would support the, the but hiring one. And I would defer to the I got one. Or do you go get a survey? In the, can the assistant money go toward a sudden survey if you think a survey is of more value than the human being at that point in time? But let the administration make that decision in two thousand twenty-two.
I wasn't clear. Did you support the survey? I think I heard yes.
I got mixed emotions on, on the survey. If I had to say what the, it's the question, do you want another analyst right now? I assume the survey is going to try to answer that question. That's the reason you're doing the survey. Okay. I think between that, between actually filling the position and going out and finding out, do you really need the position? I call it a jump ball right now. And that's why I say I would, I would defer to the new administration to say, yeah. Which one do I, based on what I'm seeing right now, which one do I need? Do I need a survey right now and maybe a half year of an analyst? Okay. Or do, of a assistant? Okay. Or do I say right now, I think we need the, the full year with the assistant? And I think it's their call. It's, to me, it's an on the ground thing called, how's it going?
Just in case it wasn't clear, I support HR analyst immediately.
Yes, that's clear.
So I would say, you know, just looking back four years ago, when our mayor, current mayor was coming into office, he had a plan to get rid of the city administrator. And I'm not going to prejudge what Mayor Markley is thinking, but she may have desires to change staff. She may not, but I think that she, we should give her the time to make that decision and see what she's going to do before we spend money on something that may get correct with her actions coming in office. That's all I can say.
Okay, so for the record, this is very awkward for me, so you all know, because I have an opponent now. And so I will speak as a council person, because that's what I am right now. I have always been supportive of both these positions, but I hear what you're saying, and I would support the HR analyst being hired right away and keeping this position in the budget for the HR assistant. I do think that the new administration, whoever they will be, would be the ones that would need to take a, just kind of let the dust settle for a little bit and be able to take a look at this. There will also be potentially new council people coming on, and for sure, someone will be, you know, replacing me if I am elected. So that's another new council person coming on board. So I think we're all going to need some time. One of my top priorities obviously is going to be to find a highly qualified city administrator as soon as possible. Tony has things he needs to move on to, and I'm very respectful of that. And so I think that person, if they have the expertise that I'm going to be seeking out, and I think you all would too, they would be able to have a pretty good grip on this as well. So I don't know if we can put a placeholder for a survey and then let the new council and administration decide kind of what Councilmember Heim was saying, if we think that that survey is needed for that department, or if things shake out, or if we find that this new HR analyst is, that we hire is doing awesome and really whipping things into shape, or, you know, what, I can't speak for what the future is going to be. And so looking at it right now, I say we hire immediately the HR analyst and get Camille some help. Keep this HR assistant. I'm, I'm supportive of both going forward to be hired right away, but it's seeming like the consensus is just to the, for the one. So that's fine. At least let's get her some help. And then let's let the new city administrator, or maybe even Tony, in the time that Tony is still here, help out with, with. I think Tony's got a pretty good grip on HR right now and what's going on in there. So maybe as we get into January, February, let's kind of see how this shakes out, and then we can talk about a survey maybe at that time. But if you want to put a placeholder in there so it's there in case we need to do that right away, I would be supportive of that.
I'm satisfied with a placeholder of forty, forty thousand.
Right now in the budget, we have ninety-seven thousand dollars for the HR assistant's benefits and salary.
But that could be technically.
Into the, the, the mayor's budget right now. So if we delay the hiring of that position for a few months, that salary savings can be used for whatever purpose you would like to use it for. So if the new administration or in the last next few months, does an analysis and brings it to council and says, we don't need to hire a consultant. Here's what I'm seeing. Do you agree? Move forward with the assistant? If we're not comfortable with that and we would like to bring in somebody to do a review, we have the funding for it. We don't have to go looking for it. It's there.
I support that.
I support that too.
All right. Moving on to IT. One item I want to point out to you is item number nine on page fifty-three. Miscellaneous, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, and that was for the software subscriptions. The ITS manager sent council a list of all of the subscriptions that we have. And you'll notice that those numbers didn't match up. They weren't even close. Did you notice that? Well, I did. And the number he gave us is four hundred and two thousand. However, there is a few issues with those numbers I want to discuss with you. First of all, there was about a half a dozen software subscriptions in here that were three years. The number that was represented in the information you got was the full three years worth of costs. So in order to figure out what our annual amount was, you had to take each of those three years and divide them by three. So the real annual subscription cost is three hundred and forty-one thousand, not four hundred and two thousand. And if you also noticed, he talked, he showed on the far right, left-hand column, who uses this, this software? And anything that said ITS or everyone is part of this hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Anywhere where it says a specific department, that is being paid for by the specific department. So when I pull those out, the annual subscriptions that are part of this number nine comes down to two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So we're getting closer to the one eighty-nine.
I'm sorry, Tony, what page are you seeing this on again?
I, I am talking about an email that the ITS manager sent you last week.
Yes.
And the email the ITS manager sent you also included the thirty thousand dollars for the box renewal, which remember he is proposing that we get away from box. He asked for a one-time cost to save about twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars a year. So when you take that out, we are essentially at the one eighty-nine that he is telling you costs in his department for subscription services. And then that is all split out by various departments, how much they pay into that. So I wanted you to get that explanation because I thought this email gave you half the story.
I have a comment about IT.
Yep.
Or a question. Can we have, maybe it's you, Tony, or somebody talk to our insurance provider about cybersecurity, like hacker security?
We talked to our insurer about cybersecurity. They have done audits on cybersecurity. They come in and, they come in and they do an audit every year on something. And within the last year or two, they did come in and take a look at our cybersecurity.
But if we got hacked, because I know somebody that's happened to, if we got hacked, would the insurance company help negotiate with the, the ransomers and, and whatever you call people who ransom?
That, that I don't know what the coverage actually is for IT.
Can we look into that? You know, it's happened to people I know, and it was really helpful to have cyber insurance. They just raved about these companies that negotiated and helped them get through this.
I, I will mention I'm supportive of one IT. I have problems with two.
Oh, my thunder. I was about to bring that up. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, 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 that's fine. I was going to say in the items that were removed from the budget by the mayor and myself was the one IT position of the two that I've been requesting. And our explanation is, pardon me, it is, it, no, this is in the document that we had forwarded to you that says items removed from the budget by the mayor and the city administrator. And here's our explanation as to why we removed it.
Similar to HR, I would be supportive of going forward with the one position for now, and then same kind of thing, let the new administration kind of figure out how that department is also, also functioning and how efficient that department would be with the three and see if it's necessary to add a fourth. Is there a placeholder in the budget for that other position, just like?
There is not.
There's not. Okay. So how much is that again, for that second position that they were asking for? I'm sorry, I don't have that document with me.
I've got it here. The total between salary and benefits is a hundred and six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand. Okay. So would it be possible to use the same survey company? If we needed to use a survey company for HR, could they also do a survey of IT? Or if that money's in that HR, would it have to be used only for HR and not IT?
It's, it's all general fund money, so you can use it for any governmental purpose.
Okay.
So if the cost for an HR survey is less than the forty thousand that had been thrown out, and we have additional salary savings from the HR position, yes, we could do that. Um, we certainly could scare up, I'm sure David could find, uh, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to do a review of the IT department as well, if that's something that, uh, the new administration wants to do.
So I'm curious, uh, is, has there been any problems identified as far as efficiency or as far as being overstaffed or anything like that in IT? What's the purpose for the survey?
It's, well, the survey would be to take a look at how they do their work, how they structure their work, uh, and to see if there are better ways to do it, if there's things that could be farmed out, et cetera, et cetera.
That, since we just hired, I would essentially be saying, uh, we hired the wrong person. If we hire them, then immediately check on how they're doing their job.
But this is what the, uh, this is what the IT manager who we hired about a year and a half, almost two years ago, has recommended. Uh, based on his knowledge and experience, he believes he needs a four-person IT department to run everything that we have.
I'm not saying for the record that IT needs a survey. I'm just saying, I'm supportive of starting with one, if that's what the consensus of the council is, to not hire all four or have all four positions filled, I'd be supportive with three. And then if we need four, I think that that would be determined without a survey. I think it could most certainly be determined without a survey. I'm just throwing it out there just in case, because we all know that there's just.
I think the performance just would be, after we get the three, it'd be easy to determine whether the job was getting done or not without a formal.
Yeah, right, right now, we just have two part, or two temporary, essentially help desk individuals. One is doing slightly higher level work. Uh, the engineer position that you approved a few months ago, we're going to be doing interviews next week for that. Uh, and we'll be doing interviews for the permanent help desk assistant. We hope to have those on board, I'm hoping by middle of December, if not earlier.
Are, are those interviews the ones that you told me that you have someone from outside of the city that works for another city come in and sit on to interview employees for Gig Harbor?
For many positions, we do bring in somebody from another agency, just as a, uh, a third set of, or an outside agency set of eyes on it. And I know that Camille's been working with the IT manager to identify somebody to bring in to help out with those interviews.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Hi.
It's, because, you, for example, bringing another IT manager from another IT department in a different city, they bring a different perspective on how they do the job. Uh, and quite frankly, it's IT being such a technical area. When I sit down to interview IT people, I don't know if the technical stuff that they're telling me is accurate or not. When I, when I hired an IT manager in Des Moines twenty years ago, I brought the IT manager from the city of Kent over to be part of the interview process, because I had nobody else with a technical background that could help me. In this case, we have one person with a technical background who will be, uh, doing the interviewing, and probably one or two other staff. We really need somebody else with a technical background to help.
And is that the only department we do that for?
No, we've done it with other departments, I'm sure.
Um, I do find it kind of hysterical, you know, that, you know, I support, um, the study with police that we'll talk about later, but it, it seems like, uh, some council doesn't, doesn't, um, trust the administration. So they want to have a consultant come in to almost every department and analyze each department, because, no, this is the third, three, we've done, we've done two, HR and this.
But I don't think anybody suggested a survey for this one.
No, they, they talked about consultants to come in. So it's just.
It was brought up, but currently I don't see consensus for, from council to put money in the, the, into the, the budget for that, uh, process. But as Councilmember Markley said, when the new administration comes in, they may decide after they've taken a look at things that they need help and bring someone in, and they'll identify funding for that. And they may have to come to council in order to, uh, have that happen. But right now, I don't see consensus for putting money specifically in the budget for, uh, in HR, or I'm sorry, in IT review.
So since Councilmember Franch didn't have this, it said, mayors and city administrator comments, IT is currently in the process of hiring two positions that were authorized by council in July. Infrastructure system engineer and information system and assistant. We hope to have these positions filled by mid to late fall twenty twenty-one. One, once these three authorized positions for its ITS are filled and functionally normal, with the new hires fully trained and performing as expected, the ability for three IT employees to manage the diverse IT needs of the city will come into better focus. So right now, what we're proposing is three total instead of four. And a year ago, we had two. So, um, the infrastructure system engineer position would take some time, because it's more sophisticated. So that would be the person right under Keith. Uh, more sophisticated responsibilities now being performed by the IT manager and allow its IT manager to focus on a higher level of activities and projects. The aggressive replacement of computer equipment and the software that the city has done in the past eighteen months may reduce the amount of daily help desk assistance by providing information assistance. Um, and that's one thing we found out, we've replaced a third of all the computers in IT in one year. And a lot of those were one to two years old. Um, and we're, we've stopped doing that. We've said that we're not going to, that's ridiculous. We're not going to replace, you know, a hundred thousand dollars of equipment every year, a year and a half. And so that's going to make the tasks that they have to do go down, because we're not going to be replacing, originally, next year, we were going to place some more than a whole another third, another hundred grand. And, um, so we're going to do this every year and a half to two years. So we're, we're telling the IT, we're not going to do that. So we're not going to have the volume. Also, they showed a chart of all the volume of all the tasks they have to do. And if you add it all up and divide by the amount of tasks, it came to twenty-seven hours, uh, a week. That's all. IT's function is to help staff, and that, uh, helps the, uh, citizens. But it's not to really engage in the public itself. So twenty-seven hours a week currently, on a forty-hour week, was not too much for the current. So we wanted to wait and see how the three, and then you can always add one in, in the budget during the year. If, you know, uh, if the city administrator and, uh, and the mayor and the council feels that, you know, go and look at the performance and see for yourself.
So what I am hearing is a consensus of councils, leave the department as three people, leave it up to the new administration to take a good look at the function, bring in a consultant if needed to do additional analysis, um, and wait to, and, and come back to council with a recommendation for a fourth position if one is warranted.
I'm not sure that we agreed to have a consultant do it.
No, 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 you have, you have not. But if the new administration believes that a consultant will help give a more definitive answer, they're going to have to come back to the council and say, this is what we're going to do. And say, all right, here's why.
It boils down to the one new.
Which, which has already been put, put in the budget, so there's no new for next year.
I, I'm just going to say, I don't think we need a consultant. I think I can tell you right now, I think we do need four IT people. And my, my reason for the argument is, is that we're getting more and more advanced in our technology here within the city. Uh, more and more, excuse me, more and more departments are now, uh, cross-talking, and all that is through technology. Uh, more and more of our day-to-day business is done technology, with technology versus, you know, the old way of doing things. And really, the IT department is kind of, you know, in my opinion, just as important as the, um, Department of Works and Parks and, uh, Community Development, because it helps all those, um, departments work together. Also, IT is really our, our last bastion of security, because if someone wants to do something nefarious to our city, they're not going to break into City Hall and steal our computers or take keys or things. They're going to go right through our technology and try to affect it, um, which could cause millions to billions of dollars worth of damage, depending on how sophisticated the attack could be. Um, so I think having a strong, robust IT department, uh, to, to prevent disaster, and then in the case of disaster, uh, have a team that can attack it, uh, triage it and, uh, get it back up. I think it's in the best interest of our citizens.
I'm okay with the three for now, getting staffed up and then coming back if we need to. Understanding what you're saying, Councilmember Abasal.
Additional.
Me?
And I, and I support Councilmember Abasal with the four.
With going to four right away, so adding that for, the fourth one into the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm, three maximum. I mean, this, with all due respect to Councilmember Abasal's prediction, we've been in a, uh, highly computerized way of doing business for many years. We just spent five hundred thousand dollars on security measures in this year. So, um, yeah, uh, for many years, that department kept the city running smoothly with two. So, uh, three, I think is plenty. If the new administration gets in, and the new mayor gets in, and they think that there's, uh, some need to up that, then that could be a discussion had at this time. But at this point in time, I'd say three maximum for me.
At three and two, I haven't gotten to four yet.
Hey. I can tie it up and we'll be here forever. Now, I, 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 I basically, uh, agree with Councilmember Franch. Uh, I, I can see one more, but I must admit two, uh, no, I, I can't, I can't get there. Also, I'm, I'm not necessarily supportive of a consultant called, in a four-person department, you're spending how much money to try to figure out if you're doing the right thing? And I'm kind of scratching my head on that one called, uh, I, I don't, if you put it on a return basis, you'd say, don't do it, okay? This, it's not worth the trip. So I'm not for the consultant.
Well, so what I'm hearing is, is leave things as they are with three. New administration, obviously, will take a look, and the new administration can always come to the new city council and say, we need four, and here's why.
Yeah.
So continuing on that page, page fifty-three, uh, parks development. Um, this is just things that we moved over from the Public Works Department, things that the, uh, the new parks manager will be working on. And you'll see, we moved twenty thousand dollars over for next year to finish the pros plan. If there's nothing further, next place to go is the Finance Department. And that is on page fifty-nine. Um, there's their narrative objectives. And, uh, the big item in here is item number six, the senior accountant. Um, the finance director has talked about what he wants to do with that, uh, that position. The idea being that we bring somebody in, uh, who is able to be a finance director someday, who can be trained up to be a finance director. And when Dave finally decides it's time to head off into the sunset, we have somebody ready to go.
And I might add, I, I asked Dave to put this in, because I think, you know, really key positions where you need someone to completely understand it, you know, what, what, if something happened to him tomorrow, we need, now, he's assured me that Jackie could take over, but still. Uh, but when I, I did have, like, a coun, a council member think that I wanted this immediately, and that's not true. This is just to put in the budget as a placeholder, so that, um, when Dave, you know, obviously, we, we still need what I just said for emergency. But when Dave feels like he needs to, um, okay, maybe I am going to retire in a year or, or eight months, I need to start doing, looking for this person now. It's not to fill it right away, it's to just, um, have the communication dialogue, so then appropriate time might be next year, and then it's there.
Thank, thank you for adding that, yes. This, this is not somebody we're going to bring on immediately, who will be here for two years. Uh, this is someone we bring on when the finance director says it, it's time. We bring someone on who can work with him for about six months.
And it was, it was also not, so once that person, let's say, let's say, um, Dave does, you know, really look for that beach in Hawaii and wants to leave or something. Once this person is in there, and after Dave leaves, it's not to add another person.
Correct.
It's, it's.
I, I thought we'd already had consensus on this.
We did, but I'm, I'm, we, we really hadn't talked all the way through it. We just presented it to you and council didn't.
Yeah, I had some questions about, when I saw the word shall be retained and filled, and I, the, the retained and filled, I think it should have said hired rather than retained. Because I was, when I was reading that retained and filled, I was thinking that that was, meant that once the, whoever this person is takes over as the finance director, that that position would be retained. So thank you for the clarification that it's not. And what is the, I mean, God forbid, you know, anything could happen to any one of our, um, key people by, at any time. So you can't just, uh, job shadow, uh, Katrina, you can't job shadow Jeff, you can't job shadow, uh, Mr. Pyasecki, you can't job shadow Dave, you know, so what is, what, under the contract with the finance director, does, does he have to give two weeks' notice? Or I'm just wondering that, that, how the timing this, of filling this position, um, will be accomplished?
Well, I don't know what is in Dave's contract, but, uh, generally speaking, when you are to a point of retiring, you generally should give your employer enough time to find your replacement. So for example, when I retired from Des Moines, I announced it in January, and I left in August. Um, if I had been moving on to another job, my, uh, my contract had said sixty days. Dave has assured us, and I'm putting words in your mouth, correct me if I'm wrong, that he's not just going to go walking out the door two weeks, uh, say, I'm going to retire, and two weeks later, he's gone.
And he's correct on that. I'll give as much time as I can. I'm thinking at least three months, but.
Because see, the, the, my, my, my thought here is, how, you know, i- i- it's not like this job position can be filled overnight. So, um, and, and I don't know, maybe it's, it's just thinking too far in, into the future, but, um, I, I guess, just broadly speaking, and I, I don't want to speak for Dave either, but, um, I, I'm assuming that you'll have some idea six months in advance. And, I mean, when will we go out to, uh, fill this position? This proposed senior accountant position?
That's really up to when Dave is ready to leave.
I was thinking of talking it over with, the buzzword for tonight is, or this afternoon, is the new administration. And looking at the needs and, and what the comfortability is. I started October first and got the budget out in ninety-seven with almost no help, but the former finance director was working in IT. I, I don't think he helped me all that much, but, you know, because I was pretty self-sufficient. Depends who you get and what your, what your goals are. It's pretty assured that next year probably will be my last budget. So one consideration, do you want the person here through the whole budget process? Yes or no?
Yes.
Uh, Jackie can handle all the, the, the background stuff with all this, but she doesn't want to get into the presentation and the working with everybody and meeting stuff and, and the field. So, so it really depends on what the new people want and the new administration and how we want to do that. And, and, and how crucial we see it. I'm certainly not going to leave the city high and dry and, and not get the budget done. You, you know, it's going to get done, but it's, what level of training and what, what are the important things that we want the person to know?
It noted in here that this, once the position is hired and they move on to finance or any of these.
That paragraph has been deleted, the, uh, it ends after incumbent, number six. That last sentence is just scratched out. And it pretty much goes off of the chart, if you look at, on page sixty-one. That, that pretty much encapsulates the spirit of what this position was meant to, to, to do.
But we won't be needing it until twenty forty, I don't think.
I sure hope you're right, because I'll be aging very well then. Councilmember Abasal?
Yeah, um, I'm in support of this. I, I think back over the last four years, how many times we've had to rely on Dave and his knowledge, his, um, in-depth, um, deep down, deep dive, um, knowledge, I guess, of our financial situation. So many times he's been able to come to us and say, oh, well, we can do this and do that, and there's money here, and we can do that. And that has really, I think, helped, uh, speed up the process for our council. We're better informed. We're better informed. He's quick, he's timely. And I think it would really serve future councils and future governments to have someone with that knowledge that doesn't just, you know, walk into it. And, you know, Dave may be unique. We don't know that the person who follows him up is going to have the same professionalism, we hope. But, you know, as anyone knows with hiring, you may not get what you want first time out of the gate. So I think your role is critical. I think you've been a huge support for us. I don't, of course, don't want you to leave, but I understand that nobody lasts forever. And so triple and double redundancy, in my opinion, is always a good thing.
And I, I mean, there's clearly consensus to put this in the budget. There's clearly consensus that it not be hired first of the year, that it'd be more in timing with the finance director's plans. But that we really would like this person to go through the budget cycle with the, in my opinion, the financial parts are things that any good finance person can walk in the door and do because it's all based on the bar system and they will recognize what you're doing right away. When I, when I first became manager in Des Moines, my finance director left. In April, I simply hired someone to come in and do the financials and the assistant finance director and I did the budget.
City administrator, we have less than 40 minutes left to complete this.
That's why I'm trying to get this wrapped up.
Can we keep the comments, you know, to, to the business? Not that yours weren't, I'm just saying. And then, and then if we don't cover something, then I guess it's my understanding that it all come up in council meeting.
During a council meeting.
Okay.
Josh, can you allow me on the Zoom? Because one reason why I was allowing you upstairs is, is I could see, I could call on you if needed, or I could see who's attending. So, and I can't do that. It's not showing on our screen.
Just a comment, I would put the full annual salary in there. I'm one of the guys who thought we'd hire a park director in six months. And I'm sorry, but hey, guys, this is one you don't, you don't mess around with. And by the way, Dave's department has saved enough money to cover the 74,000 just this year.
In the, in the budget, we have, we have budgeted for starting January 1.
Exactly.
So we'll just leave it that way, but we'll, timing wise, figure that out. All right. So the next department is the police department. So please pay, turn to page 67. And you see the narrative of objectives in here. There is one item that the mayor and I removed, and that was the change in the organizational structure to create a sergeant for detectives by reclassing one of the detective's positions. Well, I will open it up to council with your thoughts, quite frankly, on the items that are on the, these two pages first, because I know the, the sergeant issue is one that we really need to talk about. But how are you with the rest of the items other than item number two, which folds in with the sergeant position?
I concur with Councilmember Rodenberg that we should strike number two, the staffing study.
Right. The, the police department is at full staff now. Well, soon will be. I think the final officer is in the works. So I don't see any point in having that $40,000 study done. But I could strike that.
Rest of the council?
Yes.
Well, I, I think it's important to keep it in when this whole, over the, before you were on the council, there was a lot of discussion about staffing the, the police department. And one of the notions was to do a study to find out what the appropriate number of officers should be. And that got derailed because we didn't get the two positions filled. But I, I think it's important to do the study. It may come back saying you need 19 officers. It may come back saying you need 25 officers. So by having this study done, it will give us an outside perspective on whether or not we are either staffed properly, overstaffed or understaffed.
I was present for a lot of that. And my point with the study then was that who's better to decide what their department needs than a police chief that's been with us for over 30 years? Whose responsibility is staffing his police department properly? Who's never had a complaint in the last decade and who's, who, their award-winning program? And it's, I think his management shows that he knows how to staff the department. And I'm, I'm ready to talk about this sergeant whenever we want to get to that.
I, I might mention that. One reason why this came up is, you know, the chief had said three times in a, in a recording that once he got his four officers, he supported this. And so when he came and said, I'd like, I would like a new sergeant, now basically to be in charge of one other, one of the investigator, that didn't make sense to me. I don't think you need to have a sergeant to be in charge of one other person. So then he added two other people that would be in the, in the lobby. And right now they report to Fred. And I think it's better to have Fred or the chief be the one that's in charge of the two people in the lobby because they're there every day and the detectives are doing detective work. And if, if we talk of how we're, we're needing all these, we need all this, these police officers. And yet we've had two detectives for 10 years and have, and we obviously have a lot more crime. And now we're going to take one of those detectives and make them a sergeant. Now they have all these responsibilities and they're not going to be doing the detective work. So I, I thought, well, this, to me, I, I don't think of just adding, you know, one more sergeant to be in charge of one more person and take away from doing detective work when we haven't changed that. So I think a, a study would work, would tell us what, what is appropriate.
The cost to.
Can we, can we hear from other people?
Were you done, Dan?
Yeah, but I'd like to hear from people once before people talk twice.
I didn't see, I didn't see any hands.
I do want to speak, but I'll let you go first.
Yeah, I guess we, we need to make sure we understand what the problem is here. By the way, I was completely misguided in the initial part of this call. I didn't realize these other two individuals were involved. As I understood the issue, that the lieutenant is actually overloaded. And a lot of this stuff is going directly to the chief and the chief is doing a lot of things that the chief shouldn't be doing. Okay? That's the way it was portrayed to me. So in addition to picking up these two individuals from a, a detective standpoint, okay, the responsibility for them, you're also offloading the lieutenant, okay, by essentially three heads. That is the one detective, okay, that is now under the sergeant detective and the two specialists, okay? That's what I thought was going on here. And from that perspective, I, I frankly think now that I understand it, it makes sense and I, and I would, I would be supportive of that. But, and the chief's not here, because what's the real intent here? But that was my understanding. Guy talked to him this morning. That's his, that's his, that was his intent going into this thing, okay? Was basically to offload the lieutenant, okay, by bringing that over, okay? And, and also having a sergeant, somebody with supervisory capability in the detective operation. So that's a, that's my understanding. So I'm supportive of it. That's what, that's what he says it means.
Supportive of the sergeant position, what about the study, the staffing study?
Uh, I, we didn't get into that.
Okay.
We didn't.
But what are your feelings since that's actually what we're on to?
From my, if, if it's to determine how many total officers we need, we're there. We finally achieved. Voila here. We, we've done it. We've arrived finally after how many years? Three years this has been? Three and a half years to get to this point? I, I would think, to be quite honest, a, a study at this point would be premature. That's my feeling. I would, I would hold off for at least another year and say, how's it going? Because we've, we will have digested a lot of new personnel in the police department. And see how it's going, then we'll talk about it. That's my feeling.
Councilmember Abasal?
Yeah, I disagreed with the chief at the time. I think that we do need more police officers. I think he said that we were good. He was fine at 21. I thought we needed more. I don't believe hiring a consultant is going to tell us that we need less police. I think, you know, they're going to say we need more people. We've got a growing population. The chief has said, with rising population comes rising crime rates. I, I think I'm seeing more violent crime taking place in our community now more than I remember it in the past. We just had a murder, horrific murder, and of course, rising car crimes, break-in prowlers, converter, Cadillac converters being stolen. So I think we do need more police. I'd like to see us at like a 24 to 25 police officers. And I don't think we need to pay money to have someone tell us that. I think if it would be like the IT consultant, anyone you hire is going to tell you, you need more, not less, in my opinion.
So am I seeing consensus that we do not do the study?
I think you're right.
I'm seeing five head nods. So let's talk about the sergeant position. I think we've heard from two council members, maybe three, that they support that. Is that what I've seen? And now I see four or five.
Really a minimal investment. And there's, I think the chief has more than justified it in the comments by Councilmember Heinz and Councilmember Rodenberg. It's also a measure of retention, not only of our, our chief, but of our, our police officers and detectives. Now that there is a little bit of upward mobility and we've kind of enriched our department. So I'm definitely in support.
That's definitely consensus. So let's, as far as the rest of the items under the narrative objectives, any other comments before we move on to the capital outline, the equipment that the police department wants? I think none. Just turn to page 69. Three items that the mayor and I put into the budget, we removed one item, which was a request for a drone. And I'll ask council for their thoughts.
I can live with this.
Live with the three items here without the drone. Do I see head nods on that? Yes, okay.
Work on the drone next year.
And then the final item for the police department is on page 70, and that's the reclass of the community service officer. And I know we talked to council about that, to go from point four to point six. That individual would be working in our evidence room and it is a point two more than we currently have in the evidence room. But again, with more crime occurring, needing to make sure that evidence is handled properly, I think an additional point two is definitely warranted for this department. Good. Next department is the planning department. So if we move to their narrative objections, it starts on page 76.
Page again, please.
76.
76. Most of these items are simply ongoing efforts with the exception of the periodic comp plan update.
I have a number of, I think, really easy ones, hopefully.
Okay.
Okay, on page 76, under two process improvements, and I've gotten Katrina's blessing on this. And I, I hear from staff, a lot of really horror stories about new businesses getting themselves into trouble because they don't realize everything that is involved with doing business in the city of Gig Harbor. And I talked with Councilmember Markley about this too, about ways to communicate to folks, everything that's involved. So people go in and don't get themselves into financial or, or legal trouble later on. So Director Knutson, I talked to Tracy about this too, suggested we add language to planning objective two that simply says, and I can give you this language, Tony, staff to implement a communication plan, including a workshop to increase public awareness and understanding about the variety of requirements required, if we might want to work on that language. Requirements required to start a business in the city of Gig Harbor. And Director Knutson was supportive of that.
Rest of the council supportive of that?
Yes, very supportive. This will help our citizens a lot.
If you could give me that so we can make sure it gets put into the, the document?
I have more if somebody else doesn't. On page, on page 77, under number 11, this is tree retention. I would just like to add a couple of words on that second to last line where in parentheses, it says fines for trees. I would like to add fines and building moratorium. And these are just options. We don't have to exercise them, but for the department to look at that. And that's for egregious cases of clear cutting. Number 11 on page 77. So we just say in parentheses, fines and building moratoriums for trees removed without proper permits.
But when you say, but when you say building, you're meaning specific, that, that one property owner.
Correct.
Right, so if a property owner clear cuts, the county does this right now. If they clear cut and they don't have a permit, the county's like, you are not building on this property and that runs with the land. So they can't just sell it to a developer and have the developer build on it.
Okay, I just think we need to put language that when, when people hear the word moratorium, they think of a blanket across the whole city. So I think we just need to make sure that language doesn't, doesn't imply that because that, people won't like seeing that. So.
That's fine. It's just a penalty for that property.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time hearing you through the mask, so.
The next year, we're putting in this back, we're putting in strict, we're hoping to put in strict policies where there's a major fine. If you just start clear cutting trees that are like 150 years old, you can't just walk away and pay $150, which is, you know. So we're trying to come up with, with council next year. We'll actually have some things come to them. How, how do you want that to look at? So she's just making it so people can't just, you know, build the cost of the fine into their permit and just do that and then build right after it.
So I think what I heard her say is that if you're going to cut a tree down and you do it without approval, then, and you did it in order to try to build something on that property, and you cannot build something on that property if you cut the trees down without a permit, without going through the process.
For a period of time.
Yeah, right.
We'll make it hurt.
Yeah, I'm totally supportive of that.
Yeah, I think the county's timeframe is three to five years.
It's six and it's completely different because they're talking about logging, which is, we're not going to have any logging here. We don't have enough land. So we need to come up with our own thing if we want to do that. I'm just putting this in there as an option for development to think about.
Right, well, I, I would want to make sure that the, the, what these types of trees are clearly defined, because if somebody makes cutting down an alder tree or some, something inconsequential that they, that weren't aware that they couldn't do, that all of a sudden that renders this property unbuildable, you know, I.
Yeah, kind of my thought would be like a case like that, somebody's just cutting down one tree would be maybe more of a fine. It's just an individual homeowner. But when somebody clear cuts their property so that they can sell it to a developer, that is, that's more of perhaps a moratorium.
And, and I'll remind council that these things are essentially aspirational, saying this is what we want to work on next year. Everything you're talking about here is the detail of what it might or might not look like.
Work on it, yeah.
Just trying to move things along.
Moratorium, but something like a building or, or a project pulled up.
We'll, we'll pull the thesaurus out and come up with a better.
Great, great.
Okay, then number seven on page 76 versus UGA coordination. And I don't have language for this, but Director Knutson suggested that we could make that a little bit more specific and beef it up. So I would be open to anything that she wants to put in there. And this is about coordination between the city and the UGA on zoning. We've talked about that.
We just had a, we just.
We just had a big meeting yesterday with four people, five people from the county to do this. So yeah, she could add some language.
If she wants to add something to that, I'm supportive. And then I don't have a, she said number 11. I think it's, okay, so I think it is number 11 on the next page, development regulation update. I would like the department to look at changing codes for commercial, changing commercial codes to base, I guess, base the commercial obligations on occupancy instead of seats. So the number of people, not the number of seats. Because that's gotten us into some situations in the last year.
Seats as far as.
Like with a restaurant, everything's based on the number of seats. But meanwhile, you can pack the place. Like with a restaurant, everything's based on the number of seats, but meanwhile you can pack the place full of people standing.
I'd have to take a look at it most, most of the time just based on square foot, square footage of the.
Talked to Director Knutson. She was, um, she was, this is something that she thought might've solved some problems that we've experienced. So basing it on occupancy and not seats. Is everybody supportive of that?
Yeah, totally supportive of that. I mean, that's a problem that we're having right now.
I apologize, Councilor Denson. Which page and which number are you looking at?
Sorry, it's page 77, number 11. I'm pretty sure that's where she thought it would go.
Well, I have a question about that. There's no dollar amount tied to that. So since these are operational things, isn't it within the director's purview to make these things happen herself if she wants them?
Oh, no. I had sent these to her and she thought that these were things, you know.
Well, I'm glad to do it for her. I just thought that if this is something that she sees, do it, you know?
Again, as I remind you, this is aspirational, adding a little bit of extra language is to make sure you're, you're highlighting something that you want to work on is fine. It doesn't cost us any additional money. It's a staff time unless we want to do a consultant, which I don't think we need for this because we have a staff that's very good with planning issues.
We've got good staff.
I'm just confused because maybe I need to be educated here, but, uh, in my mind, I have the sign at the Tides Tavern that says occupancy 167 by order of the fire marshal. So who's, who's really authority is it to set occupancy levels?
Build a fire marshal.
Okay. Then we don't control them, right?
So, uh, we, the fire marshal is the, um.
Works for us.
Okay, I'm thinking Pierce County.
But what Councilor Denson is saying is when it comes to, for example, the number of parking spots you need or the, uh, the amount of whatever else you need, our code says, how many seats are you putting into your restaurant? Which A, if you have stand in room only activities going on, you have more people in there than seats and you have more parking going on than what the code requires. Uh, it, it does make sense to me to look at either the maximum occupancy or the square footage of the building rather than, oh, we think you can get 50 chairs in there. Therefore that's what we're going to base the regulations on. Because you can have 50 people seated and you can have 20 people at the bar and you could have 10 people in the lobby waiting to get, to get a table. And they're all, and they've all parked cars.
Parking spaces required for those.
Exactly. So.
Instead of all the people that are using.
So again, we'll just add a little language to number 11 to talk about that and we'll move on.
Okay. I only, I think I only have one more because the other one I had was building and fire. So I would like to add somewhere that the city's going to work on annexing all the new land at City Park at Crescent Creek and the lighthouse.
The lighthouse is, uh, it's, it's already in the works.
Okay.
Um, and I believe I totally agree with that. Should be in the works. They made a mistake. They made a mistake. The county, the county made a mistake. And when we gave the East Bay back, instead of separating the lighthouse, they took it back. So it's just a technicality. They understand that they, it's their air. So they're going to put it back. I am, my understanding is it's already in the works.
And what was it? What was the other area then?
But.
Crescent Creek. Anything that we don't, if it's not annexed there that we own, we should annex.
Yeah. I, the thing.
Where, where the Masonic, um, building.
And that's important. Yeah. Yeah. I agree. That way, because right now the Masonic tempo is not, so we have to actually ask the county, uh, when we want to achieve the changes. So we'll make sure that's there.
Well, we'll add that as a new number.
It's probably easy to make changes under the county.
They're not as easy.
That's true.
I attended a meeting yesterday that said, if you build in Tacoma, it takes three years, two years for planning and permits and one year to build. So we're actually not very much different.
So if there's nothing else on that, the next page 79 is the request to make the code enforcement position, uh, a regular full-time, um, position rather than point form, take it all the way up to point 1.0.
Definitely.
Bad. And I, I saw, I didn't see any objections to that. So moving on to building and fire. You will want to turn.
I did have one here.
Want to turn to.
Sorry.
Okay.
So adding a new objective, um, to, and this is something that came up in the finance, the safety committee, I think. So I would like the, the department to investigate concurrency or coordination with county firework ordinances. So basically this is, um, 80. So this is what that committee, um, discussed. So I would like us to continue thinking about what the right thing is to do for Gig Harbor, whether we follow the fire marshal, whether it's combination of their farm, fire marshal and our fire chief or our, our fire inspector, whatever we want to do. I think we need to think about being in coordination with them.
We can simply.
So at the finance and safety committee, that was one of the issues that we talked about, and that's going back now to figure out, uh,
What the ordinance looks like.
What they're going to do. Yeah. So this is in the works too.
We'll go ahead and add it as a, uh, objective.
Yeah.
Uh, the only other item here to make note of is on page 83, capital outline, they are asking for a new vehicle for a building inspector and they want it to be a all wheel drive hybrid.
Yep.
Yes.
So our next department is public works. First set of items is on page 93. Uh, I'm, I'm also going to comment on the, the way this has been structured. There is some park items that belong in here when they have to do with maintenance type activities. And there are some parks items that have to do with planning and, um, building parks and things like that. Those, some of them still appear in here, but we're going to be reworking the budget document to move them all into admin where the parks manager and the park, the parks.
Operations is under public work.
Operations is under.
And so you'll be discussing things that were taken out?
Uh, yes, I will, I will be getting to that because there were a couple, a couple of things taken out. And the, the other thing this, this budget document does is everywhere that you have a shared expense, that shared expense is shown in every one of those departments. So for example, we have some equipment that we have proposed be purchased using part, um, parks funds, water funds, wastewater funds, stormwater funds. And you'll see that in every one of these, uh, departments. I will be skipping over those after we talk about it the first time. So.
So did we, at one time we had that number seven was duplicated in administration. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. So on page 93, part, I'm sorry.
So I had some questions about, um, back on page 85, where we talked about the description of the public works department, the function.
Okay.
And I, I, I've been lit, kind of led to believe that we are under utilizing our Cartograph system. And that system, I think it is, from the demonstration I had, um, that is a system that really tracks things very well. What, you know, from how much time our workers are putting into cleaning bathrooms to, um, how many times oils, you know, maintenance is getting done on vehicles. And I, I, I think that it's being underutilized and I don't know whether or not it's a staffing issue or an enforcement of a policy issue. So if you could find out, uh, try and clarify what the policy is for staff to enter things into Cartograph.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, work that into under, somewhere under the, um, description of function. And I'll follow, I'll follow back up on that at the budget meeting, uh, during the council meeting. Thank you.
Back to page 93. Items seven, eight and nine were taken out of this section and moved into the, um, parks development section that is now, uh, under admin. And just need council comments on the items five, six, and then 10 and 11. And by the way, these will all be renumbered.
The only question I have is that I thought we had, um, committed to doing a buffer between Crescent Creek Park and the neighbor, Mr. Paris.
It's happening right now.
So it doesn't need to be.
No, for working, it's going to happen and it's been a lot, a huge process, but it's, 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 uh, it's happening. It's, it's happening well.
What kind of trees are we putting in there?
We are putting, we're making sure that it's not a wall because that's not what we, our standards. And, um, I've actually met many times with Mr. Paris. He doesn't want, and I don't blame him. He doesn't want his, his whole pasture to be shaded. Even if he, even in 40 or 50 years. So he's very sensitive that the trees do not get more than like 15 feet tall. So we're putting in, um, so I think it's short pine, um, a variety that really only grow to about, you know, 15 feet. And, and we're scared, we're spreading at 10,000. We're putting about $3,300 worth because we're scared, spreading that into the skate park and then Veterans Park.
Did you go with the type of trees with, with him?
Excuse me?
Did you go over the type of trees with him?
Yeah, I got so involved that then I just turned them over to Ken. Because I've already spent six hours on this or more and we've got designs and.
So he's involved.
Yeah. So he is in, in fact, I, yeah, I was at it. So he's working directly with Ken. And I said, if you get it too complicated, you know, it's not going to happen. You've asked for this for four years. So let's keep it simple. And he's going to, and so he's working straight with Ken. They're going to get it figured out. Ken just has to order them. But, and they're all native, natural. And we will have a hose that's within a hundred feet to, um, water it next, next, uh, summer. And any master plan we do down there, it won't interfere in this.
Um, also for page 93.
This on number three, uh, the park asset reservation software. If the new parks manager had an idea in the future to do any kind of city reservation program regarding like city recreational facilities or recreational programs for, for kids, would this be able to accommodate that at the 10,000?
Possibly.
Okay.
The, yes, I, I think it would.
Okay. So it could, it could include our current reservations that we have for our current parks, but it could also possibly accommodate if we did a recreation program.
We did a recreation program where we would be saying we're doing this basketball league.
Yeah.
And we have all these people sign up.
Yeah.
I think it will. If I'm thinking correctly, what we did in other cities I've worked in.
Okay.
But if not, well, we'll figure it out.
I can't imagine it would be too much more to add.
And, and I will also tell you, if we do end up doing something like that, uh, it's not going to happen next year.
No, no.
And we'll have plenty of time to plan for it, figure out how much money it's going to cost and put that into the 2023 budget.
Okay.
But it will be an expansion. If we, if something else needs to be done, it'll be expandable instead of having to switch from what we're doing.
I would hope so. And when we, when we, when we go to get this particular system, we can ask those questions.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's what I would hope for too. Jenny, thanks for bringing that up.
Good idea. All right, I'm going to move on. Now with the way the, the, um, budget is organized, next comes upper, uh, arts commission issues. So I'm simply going to, in, I, I think we'll be reevaluating how we do that. And it'll probably go in under admin with the parks development because I think the parks person will be working with them a little bit more. So, uh, turn to page 96. This is where they're actually supported and we talked with them and I'm pretty sure there was a lot of council support for this. Their narrative of, 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 uh, objectives, the 30,000 for creative endeavors. And did we increase that? For some reason my, my brain remembers we may, did we talk about increasing that?
What page are we on?
I'm on page 96, night, item number one, creative endeavor support.
I thought there was discussion about that.
And I see Josh just popped on. Josh, do you remember us talking about increasing that line?
Yeah, that was 25,000 last year and it was increased to 30,000 this year.
Okay.
By the arts commission.
Okay.
It's already done.
It's already baked in. Okay. And, uh, the harbor, harbor pro, art project is so cool, but we got to go find some really nice stumps to work on. So as you do your walks, mayor, um, tell us when you see one.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
The very next page is page 97, uh, parks division operating. The only time I'm going to talk about these four pieces of equipment because they are, I'm sorry, two of them are perks only and two of them are shared with other departments. Any concerns or comments on this?
I keep telling, I keep meaning to tell Ken to put a sign on our spinner at this park that it's coming soon because we've had, we've had tape, fencing tape around for like four months and it doesn't say anything. So we need to say, coming soon, new spinner.
If there's no comments or concerns on that, I will direct you to the document, uh, that contains items that the, uh, mayor and I removed. And in there were two items, uh, that had been proposed to be shared by parks, streets, water and storm that we were not recommending. One of those was a maintenance man and the other one was a F350 Ford pickup. Along with a snowplow package. Would like council's input on that.
We talked a little bit, um, about this the other day. We talked about that, uh, the new F350 Ford, four-wheel drive pickup that operations wanted. And, uh, I have an opinion about that. You know, one of our most important duties as council is to provide safe streets and to promote commerce and make sure that that has the ability to happen. And so public works has asked for this truck. It's a four-wheel drive F350, uh, with a snowplow.
And a spreader, salt spreader too.
And salt spreader. And so I think it's important to have that because our two big plows is a 1999, 22-year-old plow and a 2021 year snowplow. And we also have a 2007 similar, uh, to what they're asking for now. But since that, we've added, uh, according to, you saw me ask Jeff this question the other day, uh, 15 to 20 miles of new streets. And the majority of those are in our, our newest neighborhoods where those big piles cannot maneuver or, or get through. So this would allow those neighborhoods to be plowed more readily. Uh, and that would allow safer streets for one thing. It would allow the ability of commerce to occur, uh, with mail trucks, Amazon delivery trucks, FedEx trucks. Whereas if they're not plowed, they can't. So, and then I think it was Ken that mentioned that he had one breakdown last year and that put him back behind and it was snowing quicker than they could plow. So I think this is a safety issue and I think it's a commerce issue. Uh, so I'm in favor of, uh, uh, getting them that truck. It's a $75,000 truck that I don't think in the scheme of things is a lot of money when it comes to producing safer streets. And this truck, when it's not spreading or not plowing, can be used for other things that they need the truck for, uh, in public works. Uh, this, the, actually the cost is spread out over parks, streets, water and storm. So it's not directly. So I'd like to have that $75,000 put back in the budget.
What are your thoughts when we have plows, extra plows just sitting there that can just be attached to a vehicle? Cause we actually have more piles. They're just not attached to the vehicle.
They have no trucks to attach them to.
I, actually they do.
I, well, I would think that they might know what they have and what they don't have.
Well, we, we, okay, just, just, you know, to remove this, we didn't just, we, we actually, we did talk to them. We don't just remove something without uh, a deep dive discussion with them.
Well, they still want it regardless of how your conversation came out. They still want it. It's still needed. And unlike you implied the other night, it's not a wish list. This is something in their best experienced opinion is something they need to provide, uh, for our citizens. So I think that, uh, we ought to at least give them the tools to do that. I would second that. And by the way, that's not a conflict of interest, but.
If it had been a Dodge, you may have a different opinion. Is that what you're saying? I know. Do you see those thumbs go up?
Snow, having been on HOA discussion, a lot of times on snow removal. You don't need snow removal till it snows. Okay. That's the first rule. Okay. And. And while right now it's just raining, not snowing, you may say, well, you know, you really don't need this. Uh, based on our experience, particularly in the newer subdivisions where you're making tighter turns around things like cul-de-sacs, to be exact, are real, are real challenged to, well, Pierce County trucks couldn't go through there. I, I know that for sure. The big ones, they, they can't make it. The smaller F three fifties, the pickup-based units can make it. Okay. And I think from that alone, based on what Councilmember Rodenberg's saying, the additional mileage is mostly in residential neighborhoods. Um, I think this is a good investment. I really do. Uh, it's a sound investment and it's one of those, like I say, you won't appreciate it till it's snowing like crazy and then you'll really appreciate it.
Best of council.
I, I will reserve my thoughts on this till I do a little bit more investigation on whether or not there are plows that are, can be attached to existing equipment. As far as, uh, commerce and safety, not, not every road gets plowed. The road that, that I access, Ross Avenue, never gets plowed. Harborview Drive is getting, I see the plow going by constantly when it snowed last year. Novak Street maybe got plowed once. The, my end of Ross Avenue never got snowplowed. So the, the notion that, um, we're going to be getting, um, everybody up to commerce and safety standards by making this purchase. I don't see the connection there, but, um, I will have to do a little bit more investigation on what the existing equipment that we have right now and whether it can be retrofitted to existing trucks. I, I guess, um, you know, depending on what the, I, I, I don't know if the rest of the council has done any investigation into, uh, Councilman Rodenberg obviously has his opinion. The mayor has his opinion. So I would, I think in the best interest of taxpayers' money is for everybody to do their own investigation on, um, if they haven't already, on what actually exists.
Also, I mentioned, this isn't just my opinion. This is sitting down with the city administrator. We have given them new trucks every year. So, and we are still giving them many trucks this year. So it's just saying that we feel that it's adequate at this time and, you know, maybe you can wait a year. So whatever council feels, it's, it's time to take turns, um, eh, on that.
I'm very supportive of this, uh, listening to, uh, Councilmember Hines over there. Uh, and, uh, Councilmember Rodenberg, I think it's important that our neighborhoods are serviced and if this is the truck that's going to service our citizens, we need to do it.
I agree. And hopefully we'll be able to do more streets like Ross and, and get to some of those neighborhoods that aren't covered as frequently now. That's four.
Oh, I see four. Pardon me? And then I'll, then I'll ask about the maintenance van.
I think Ken made a really good case for the maintenance van with needing undercover or needing a dry place for their equipment. So I would be in favor of that one.
I'm in favor of that storage area as well to keep those lines warm and the water from freezing. I think that's what they said. Otherwise they have to drain these lines every day.
What we do not have yet is information from the Public Works Director regarding how many times, uh, they need to use the vector truck during the winter time.
Can you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry. What we haven't heard yet is, uh, the information we requested from the Public Works Director as to how many times they've had to drain the lines and the, that piece of equipment during the winter time.
Are we talking about the vector truck or the maintenance?
She, she just jumped it.
Oh.
Into the vector truck storage area.
Oh, store, oh, okay.
Let's, let's finish, let's finish the maintenance van first.
Okay, that's what I was thinking of. Is that like the, the minivan?
Yeah.
Type that they were talking about?
It's like, it's like one of those Sprinter vans.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Yeah, I think that would be something that I would support for them to have.
Head nods, uh, head shakes. No?
I think it sounds great, but I, I am trying to be physically responsible for, for doing it at one fifty. Maybe we could ask them of those two items, the, the van, which clearly was important, but this vectors truck storage sounded really important to you. They're about the same price. Do you think we get asked, Jeff, what, what he thinks is the highest priority of those two?
So the van.
We can discuss this at the council meeting, obviously, again.
Yeah.
Van versus the vector truck storage.
Yeah, if we were to do one of those, what do you think, Councilmember Markley?
I had asked if we would be able to rent a storage place at like the Shure Guard or one of those places.
True, you did ask that. We do not have that either.
Okay.
We don't have the information yet.
Also, like we said, how many times in the past have we needed to do this? I mean, I, I'm trying to be physical responsible for our budget and we're, you know, we're going to get a million dollars in there pretty darn easy. So sometimes you take turns and not just to, um, I did correct myself by saying a wish list, but again, uh, you have to be careful not to just, um, just, just spend all the taxpayers' money. And maybe if we, if they have to drain the lines a couple of times a year or, or you throw a blanket over it or something like that. I mean, it's worked. So, I mean, and, so.
I support waiting to hear what, what their prior, what their top pick, I guess, would be. I mean, if it's between a snowplow and a, that they're going to use a couple of times a year versus a truck or a covered vehicle that they would use a lot more months out of the year, I would want to take a look at that too and see, although I do agree, we need the snowplow with the smaller plow to get through Harbor Hill and my neighborhood where it's, people are not just, they, they are parking on both sides of the street when they're not supposed to. And it is very hard to get any regular-sized vehicles through there. So.
Maybe that's something that we can bring back at the council.
Yeah, maybe we can bring it back and just further.
Now too.
What's that?
After three, were we going to stop at three?
I can't.
Ken, no, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry. It's.
It is three.
It is a little after three, so I have to go, but.
Uh, what, just i- in regards to this vector truck storage, in addition to how many times it's being used, I would also like to have some information on whether they've thought about if there's a problem with these lines freezing, if they've thought about using a block heater, uh, there's things called a block heater that you plug in to keep your, uh, diesel's truck starting easily. So, um.
Everyone in Canada has one of those.
Well, they have, they have heaters that can wrap lines.
Yeah.
That you also plug in.
So if, um, Councilmember Denson is leaving, um, should we go ahead and stop now for the day? It, we can continue the discussion, uh, at the council meeting on the eighth. And dare I even suggest that we schedule another meeting like this to finish this off sometime next week?
Well, how, how thick have we packed? Would we got to go here?
How much you have left?
Well, we still have this much. We're about halfway through it. Now, a big chunk of it is the, um, uh, the capital budget with all the projects that we've listed, which I, I think there may be a little bit of going back and forth on that, but for the most part, it's based on what the information that we have heard from council and the council committees over the last six months, two years. So I think Jeff has done a very good job putting that program together. And I don't see that taking too much time to finish.
If, if we're going to talk about page by page, I think we need to do it in a work session, not just at the council meeting.
I agree. Yeah. And I do too have to go. I've got a football game that I got to put on. Um, but I do agree with Councilmember Wook. I think, I'd like to continue. I think we're doing a good deep dive here and it's better.
Okay. We'll find the time to, uh, we'll work with, uh, Josh and, and our, and look at the schedules. Do another one.
Oh, with that, then we just need a motion to adjourn your hour.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, second.
Meeting adjourned.
House Member Eversole got the second on that, Josh.
Second.
Thank you, Wizard.
What's arguing about?
Oh. That is true. Generally, when you're done with your work, you're done.
Yeah.